The meeting of the Town and Carthage City Council together on Thursday, September 6th, 2022. Would you call to vote, please?
Councilwoman McEnapple.
Here.
Councilwoman Bathard.
Here.
Councilman Ebow.
Here.
Councilman Peters.
Here.
Councilman Leiting.
Here.
Vice Marys.
Here.
Have you had a chance to read the minutes from August 4th, the last council meeting?
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Second.
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 Motion second. Any discussion?
First.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Consideration of bills over 10,000, we don't have any. Do we have any citizens' concerns? And then we'll move on to the mayor's report. Just a couple of things. This weekend is the last weekend for our city pool to be open, so Saturday will be open from 11 to 5, Sunday from 1 to 5, and Monday, which is Labor Day, from 11 to 5. On Sunday, you have a free day, so you can come and swim for free, everybody, anybody who wants to come in. Our Market Fest is Saturday, September 17th, from 10 to 4 at the City Park. We're gonna have vendors, food trucks, classic cars, dog shows, so if you're a vendor, please, you've got some time still to sign up, have a booth, and if you just wanna come out and find some fun things to do, come join us that day at the City Park. We all know that we're doing the water line down Main Street. It's moving along even faster than we hoped, which is a good thing. If we get it finished in time, that it's still warm, we possibly could then start paving, which would be wonderful. That's it. Does the city attorney need?
No official reports today. I do have a slight change in wording of the Coral Hole Bridge ordinance based upon Councilman Petty's comments at the last meeting, but we'll go over that over a second reading.
Okay. Did we do citizens' concerns about just not paying attention? We did.
I'm so sorry. Ignore me.
That's all right. City reporter, ma'am.
I have nothing official unless you guys have any question.
Okay. Police Department Chief Davis?
We have the monthly report there, guys, in front of you like always. If you have any questions about that or anything else going on, please feel free to ask. Let's talk to you about it.
Okay. Thank you. Public Works? Leslie?
I have a question. Any questions?
You wanna tell them Chaz is retired?
Yeah. Chaz, Friday will be Chaz's last day.
Yeah, he's been here ten years, and you decided he was old enough to retire. We don't think he is, but there you go. Okay.
Are we gonna buy us a pizza or something? Have a little shindee?
Yeah.
Like we are.
We are. We are.
We do too.
Gotta have pizza and cake and a little number.
Is that tomorrow?
Yeah.
Will he be here?
Yes.
Send an email or something about the time or something?
Um, we usually do, they usually do lunch around 11:30.
Water sewer, Derek had a prior obligation, so Rusty's gonna see.
He asked me to go over some numbers right quick, and I'm next, so I'll just do them both at once. The Rye Engineering Study we did for the leak study for the whole system, they basically found one fairly large leak and three small leaks. They got two, I think they got three of those four repaired, and last month's average was 632,000 a day, and the last 16 days since the leaks have been repaired, our average dropped to 528,000 a day. That's 104,000 gallons a day. What that, what that ends up being is that's gonna cut our yearly water loss down in the neighborhood of about 30 million gallons plus. Now, money-wise, that'll save us approximately, the Rye Engineering was about, I think about 15,000 to do the study. That's gonna save us, even on a conservative side, we're looking at 40,000 plus in savings. So that was money well spent.
Paid for itself.
Yep.
Paid for itself.
And over.
Almost three times over in a year.
It was a rise choice in the Osbornia Park to do that.
Well, they found a major leak under Upper Ferry Road. We were losing a lot of water right there, and there was an old abandoned pipe. It was 11-foot deep, wasn't it, Liz? There was an old abandoned pipe right there, and the water leaking was going through that pipe and coming out. We don't know where. So we would've never found it.
Probably in the river.
Somewhere, probably. We'd've never found it, though. It's just too deep. And then as far as the water plant goes, the only thing I have is, is we installed a new switch panel this week and got us up to the modern day where we can replace parts and not have to worry about a switch shutting down. So that's a good positive thing. That was a capital outlay. So that's all I've got unless y'all have questions.
Okay, thank you. Waste water treatment?
I don't, I don't have anything unless y'all got some questions. We're as easy as usual.
You're doing a great job. Thank you. Fire Department Chief Fire?
Just written report tonight, Mayor, unless y'all have a question.
Okay. Thank you. And we're waiting on the CDVG to, Bonnie comes through the money to get the new fire engine.
I actually wait.
Okay, right. Not a CFO report granting engineering. They didn't call in tonight, but we're moving. I mean, Les, you wanna tell a little bit about the Main Street, how far along we are on that?
The what?
The Main Street. We're a little further along than we thought.
Yeah, probably they, well, this month, probably they would do that. They'd be going. There's no happening.
And we're moving along with the water booster station on Dr. Creed.
They got everything ready. Just waiting on the phone, Dr. Eric.
Which is that one side of the street, right? Unless they're crossing over to Tigh, but it's just the one side. It's not gonna come back up.
They're crossing. They're crossing.
Yeah. But there's not a full line going across the other side of the street. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. In unfinished business?
We have a second reading for our budget ordinance, raising the hourly wage for the town lifeguard to $10 an hour in lieu of hiring an assistant pool manager and authorize the pool director to select an assistant director from the lifeguards to have compensation of $11 an hour.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? The second one's the Coral Hole Bridge. Councilman Petty had some concerns last
time about regulating state property, as did I, and we've tried to write the ordinance to obviate those concerns as best we can. The previous ordinance said vehicles meeting these specifications shall not utilize the Coral Hole Bridge to enter and exit the town Carthage. This one says vehicles with these specifications shall not enter and exit the town Carthage by way of the Coral Hole Bridge. So it's farmed up a little bit to say we're just regulating where you can and can't come into our town versus what you can and can't utilize to come into our town.
May I say something? I don't, I still think, I think we're pussyfooting around it because the vehicles are still coming into our town. They're just coming in a different way, and I still think we're trying to dictate what the state's facility is doing, and I don't think we're allowed to do that.
Meaning that the bridge belongs to the state, not to us.
Exactly.
The state is okay with this. The, we talked to them. It's, they're saying is we don't gain anything physically to the bridge.
Also, we still don't have any clarification. The South Carthage is supposedly on their side. So. And we said we would hear about that, not before we talked about that.
Yes, yes. We, I talked to, to the new mayor, Mayor Nixon.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yes, and he's bring, he's actually gonna present this very one to them tonight, and he's, in his opinion, this is a good idea, but he has to run it through your council. Yes, sir.
Motion to table this until next month. Second.
All right. Any, any discussion?
I'm gonna table till next month, yeah, just because we agree that we pass it on the condition of we would hear what they had to do, so I'm good with that.
We didn't agree we'd pass it. We agreed we'd wait till this month for the second reading.
Any?
To see what, yeah, to see what they, we agreed we'd wait to see what they did.
I made the first reading so that we could.
See what they do, so that we push it forward.
Exactly. Yeah, we made the first move, so let them decide, and we'll follow them.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Okay. As far as looking for the financial officer, we have that also in the paper and in our Facebook page. Right now, we're using a group called MG Group. It's a CPA/CMO consultant firm that MTS suggested. They're just keeping our books up to date for July and August. That's all they're doing, so we will not be behind for two months. Yes, sir.
Are they costing us? I'm assuming?
Yes.
We don't know how much. We didn't approve it or anything like that. Because it didn't come, as far as I know, I wasn't here last month, so.
It can, it's, as long as it's, they're keeping it under a certain amount, and it's just a temporary situation. All they're doing is just keeping the books up to date right through.
But can we, what's the certain amount?
Well, of course, you can't go over 10,000. That's, that's a limit.
So they can spend $9,999, that's, we're not gonna talk about?
Well, you want to discuss it. They've been here one day.
I'm asking you, I don't think anybody else on the table knows besides.
I didn't know anything about it.
Yeah, I didn't either.
I'm not making a big deal. I'm just asking you for a number. That's all I'm doing.
Yeah, would you be able to get that number for us?
Sure. They've told, we've told them they can't go originally over 5,000. They're coming, they're coming Thursday, and they're coming back tomorrow, and we're hoping by tomorrow they'll have it up through August.
That's, that's for a month, though.
That's what I'm asking.
Well, maybe all together, for it to get us up through August.
Well, we need double more than just maybe. Is it or isn't it?
Well, they're coming. If they can finish it out tomorrow, then we're done for the, that's the last two months, yes.
Well, then how much is it gonna cost the next month? Because if we go through the proper proceedings to order a finance to, to hire a financial officer, not like this white horse that we had last week when, last month, you brought in somebody, we need to have time to check with, let me finish, time to check into references, to check into background to see what ability is this person has.
Right, right. This, this is not some, this is just a firm that's helping until we find the right person. We're still looking for the right person. It's just so we don't get so far behind, and I, I can tell her not to come if, if you prefer. It's just, it's, it's a firm that does this professionally, or it's a CMFO/CPA firm. That's all they do is municipal, and they do audits too, municipal audits. But I understand if you've got, yes, sir.
I just ask that, yeah, if you can just supply that information to us as far as what their cost is per, I guess, what per month is.
Did they give you a cost before?
Yes, I can go get what the paper says. It's, it's a, hold on. It's, it's a, it's a total cost just to bring us.
It's not one over an hour, do it one way.
I think while we're here, we want it at the number because, I mean, if they're only coming in for two days, it's costing us $5,000.
No, 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 it's not.
But we need to see that.
It's a minute. Let me go. Okay.
We need to see.
That way we know what we're actually spending.
It's just a very temporary, but I'll, I'll be glad to go get that.
Motion to resist for five minutes.
Yeah, let's take a little break.
Second.
Night and day.
Did you see that?
I don't have a CPA, and I get, I get better, I mean, I'm just saying with, that's where we're gonna disagree.
The ad doesn't answer CPA. It asks for someone who has either a degree in accounting or three years of professional experience in accounting.
And I think that's acceptable if that's the ad, but we're still not getting hits on it, though.
Well, not, that makes that quality, no. Not yet. Yes, sir.
I think, it's my opinion that whoever we hire needs to have the ability to prepare, prepare a budget like Scott did.
A good standard to have.
If they can't do a budget, we don't leave them.
Y'all, Scott, Scott was very exceptional. Like.
We were lucky to have him the time we had him.
Yeah, he's dressed right dress. He's very organized. I mean, I looked at, like, I mean.
You didn't ask question him.
I mean, well, I questioned him several times, and he explained in detail thoroughly what was going on.
Exactly. You were.
So, yeah, I mean, like, I think it's a great standard to have. I'm just saying, you don't always get a Scott. It's nice to have a Scott. I like a Scott. I think we all like Scott. You just don't always get one, but we might be setting our bars pretty high there, but I don't know.
I think so. That's, that's where, that's where we are right now. But please, reach out. If you know folks who are our clients, please reach out to them. I mean, we've been, some of you may know someone who's just the right person.
So, since we're, since we're on the subject, we were just all just kinda chattering back and forth. Can we go ahead and ask the attorney if we can, if he can look in to see if we can, if we are tied to this because, and, and I'm just going off base with what you said right now, so I don't have a source on it, but we amended our charter to have that position, but that amendment got killed. A charter amendment got killed last year.
Sorry. Well, you guys started to split it.
To split the position, but that was an amendment to our charter, and that charter amendment passed the House, and the governor signed it, came back here, but it died, so that means that we haven't split the position. Therefore.
No, it wasn't. No, that was an ordinance change.
Well, if, no, not ordinance, a charter change.
I don't think it was ever included in the charter.
No, that wasn't, that wasn't in the charter change. That was an ordinance when you guys split the job.
Yeah.
But our charter needs to match that at some point. I would.
Yes, it does.
We need to have made them coincide together for you to do it.
If an ordinance goes against the charter, then the ordinance is not on board because the charter is the language which we are adopting, and then we are gaining our power as a council through that charter. So if our ordinance goes against the charter, we cannot therefore sustain that.
I'm not sure.
You just bring up the ordinance change, right.
But the.
You see that next month?
Well, the ordinance.
Yeah, as long as it.
If ordinance was changed, the charter was not changed.
Well, can we, can we ask the attorney? Because I think we're saying two different things here. When we create like a new employee position, that doesn't have to be like charter. I mean, that's not changing our charter, is it?
We just have to make sure.
You don't have to make your charter.
As long as it doesn't go against our charter. No, you're correct. So what I would say is, can we look at creating that position as a contracted position, hence what we're doing right now?
As is.
And looking at.
And not naming, not naming an officer of the city.
Not naming it at all.
Having a different supervisor supervise that position.
Yeah, and having it as part-time, and we get, we get the guy back that we want, and it's not a supervisor position.
Well, you can contract people to come in and help you. That's, if that's what you're asking.
So that's what.
But it's still, it's still a contracted.
So my, my question would be, can, can you make sure that there's no, if we wanna go and ask Mr. Yezel if he'd like to come in and work as a contracted employee that is not an officer?
As the CMFO.
As the CMFO.
That does not report directly to the.
That is not an officer position. Can we do that? And so I think it would behoove us to have him look into it. If it, if it can happen, go ahead and give permission. If there's no problems, go ahead and have permission to get that offer out there to Scott, and we roll with it. Y'all have any problems with that?
I think, let me ask you what y'all think about this motion. I think this is serious enough. We do get the permission to go ahead and we schedule a special call meeting just to get him the offer approved and on board because we've been with that one for a long time. It'll take about five minutes or two.
I don't like special call meetings. I, I would say that would.
We have, we have the motion, right?
An official motion.
It's just a request.
It's just a request, because I don't, but I mean, we can make it a formal motion.
May I ask one other question?
Yes, sir.
Couldn't we go ahead and offer him a contracted position now? I mean, I don't think there's anything that's.
Well, there's, there's a situation that we don't want to get into, Mayor. We tried it out last time, and you quickly pulled out the charter, saying he has to report to me. So we just wanna, can you make an objection?
Yeah, I'll make a, it's okay. I'm gonna make a motion. I'd like to motion that the city attorney, and I'm gonna say this low, just, um, look into any conflict of interest of contracting. And I'm just gonna put in general, contracting a CMFO position, parentheses, non-officer. And then, that's basically the motion right there.
Second.
And then, yeah, let's just finish.
Make a decision right there.
Yeah, and we'll go with it. Second.
Any discussion on that? Motion second. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Okay.
Now, I would like to motion, if we need to go ahead and just do this, we can vote on this now. If we find out that there is no, is no conflict of interest, it's completely okay. We're not breaking any rules.
Can, can we also, on that motion, put who that person's gonna report to?
I'm just gonna do it as a set, a separate motion on it.
So you're gonna do the approval of hiring.
Yeah, because if it's a non-officer, well, yeah.
We need to, we need to put that under somebody.
Let me, let me, let me go ahead and extend that motion. I'm.
Could we first just, could we first find out if we can do this?
Yeah, let me, hold on, let me, sorry, let me just, I'm trying to keep this, keep that what you got there. That's fine.
That's okay.
I'm rescinding the motion and I'm reverbe, re-saying this with everything I just told you, and that, that physician reports to the city council as a contracted.
Wait, are you redoing the motion to allow it if it is non-conflict and then what?
And, um.
Because this is your second motion.
Well, I'm keeping it under one motion. It's just part, that's part of the same motion.
Well, you've already voted on the first motion. We've not voted on the second.
Oh, yeah, we're, okay.
Make that, make that second motion.
So second motion, that physician, should it be valid position, reports to the city council. As a whole? As a whole, not as, yeah, no, you can't, and we already know that. No contract reported individual.
Can we amend that to on a daily basis?
Wait, is there a second?
Not yet, not yet, but I'm just, I'm still in the middle.
Yeah, if there's any concerns on a daily basis that they would run their concerns through the city recorder or the HR as opposed to, that way there's no conflict. Like, if something comes up on the day, she's.
Here's a deal, and, and I get that, but there are, there are things that they're gonna have to, I mean, they're gonna have to run things through whoever. They're gonna have to run things through the city recorder, and I don't think that we need necessarily shackle them to just the city recorder. This person may have to run this by the mayor. They may have to run it by the city council, but I don't wanna shackle them to one person.
But what I'm saying is, if they have a concern during the day, they can't get a hold of all six of us and talk to us. They need one person to go to. That's what I'm getting at. We don't want it to fester and be a problem for a month.
I just, I don't necessarily.
What do y'all think about that?
I agree with that.
You agree with that?
Yes.
That's gonna get us until we're, we're only once a month gonna hear problems and have to fix them all and whatnot.
I just.
That sounds stressful.
I just, again, I'm just, I'm not trying to pick sides. I'm saying whoever it is. I'm just saying, I don't know how much of that is our, her lane. Is, is that your, would that be more your lane if there's a problem arising?
Could we not put it at the discretion of whoever we hire?
That's what I'm.
To go to whoever they feel like they need to.
Exactly. That's, and I think that would be, I mean, if I'm a contracted person and I come in and it's like, if you have a problem, you've gotta go directly. You have to go to this person. But I might be like, well, I don't need anything from this person. I need something from this person here. I would say I would agree with you on that, that we need to have it go. So I get what you're saying, but.
But see, I don't, I don't agree with that because every, anyone that works on it has someone to report to. You can't just come in and say, well, today I'm gonna talk to this one because I get the answers I want. Tomorrow I'm gonna talk to this one because I get the answer. We need someone to direct report that if something could be, there's a reason for, for what I'm saying, and you know what that is.
I, I get it, but again, I think, on a day-to-day operation, that's just not us. We don't deal with day-to-day. We.
That's why, that's why we need someone to deal with the day-to-day.
But again, I think we're stepping on the executive. I think we're extending our powers.
All we're saying.
I think we're stepping on.
We're doing that by hiring, we're doing that by hiring a contracted employee and having them answer to us. Same thing. All we need is them to have someone to report to during the week if there's a problem.
I'm just saying, I think we're opening an open box. If we go that way.
You opened it when you said you were gonna make it report to the council. Took all the power from the city and put it right to us.
Because every single, every single position here, technically, right now, it's, it's, right now, it's not, we had it amended in the charter so that if everything did report to the council. Every, every position that was a supervisor position reported to the council. We hadn't, because right now, it is not clear whether they report to the executive or the council. That is, that is a dispute between the executive and the council right now. It's, it's still an ongoing dispute because our charter is not clear on that.
Can we refer to our attorney and see what he advises?
You were, yeah, because you, you weren't on the council at that time, but then we, we went through this, like, because we didn't know, we had to clarify who our supervisor do. So according to me as it is, all supervisors already do report to the council. They work for the council. That's how it is. Now, but a day-to-day operation, day-to-day, they can't report to the council. They, they're gonna, they're gonna talk to the mayor, and they're gonna, they need to have an open dialogue with the mayor. I'm sorry, Mayor. Go ahead.
You're not saying that they can't have an open dialogue with the mayor and work with the mayor. They would just.
Have someone to report to.
Have someone.
And so they report to us every month, just like city recorder, police, public works, they report to us every month.
Have your court.
So, that's all I'm saying, but, and like, just keep it as is, but it's just a contract. We're contracting out this position is all, and we don't need to put any more strings on it, is all I'm saying.
I agree with what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, if the police department has a problem, the mayor runs the police department on a daily operation, they go to her, unless there's a problem, it goes to the mayor. We're trying to stop, to create any problem. We're trying to make everything peaceful.
I get it, but we can't change ordinance based on a single individual.
It's not changing ordinance.
I mean.
You amended it to hire a contractor. It's not on the ordinance at all, according to your, according to your motion.
Could we ask Eric, any, if we're, we're right track with this?
We're just having a discussion.
Yeah, we're not.
So I'm curious.
If you'd like to.
Yeah, I'm jealous. Sounds like you guys are trying to hire a CMFO as an independent contractor because the person that you guys wanna hire had some sort of personal conflict with the mayor and doesn't wanna report to the mayor. The mayor under your charter is the general supervisor of all town employees and officials, and so if your goal is to completely cut the mayor out from any involvement with this person, that's just not gonna work. There's no way to do that.
The goal is not have a direct report. Because like, the, the people that work for the streets department, they don't direct, they report to the supervisor, and the supervisor reports to the mayor.
I think the right thing to do is collectively come up with a system that you think would be workable for the person that you want to hire. Tell me exactly what that is, and I'll research it and tell you if you can do it.
I'd say, like, let's, just to get our definitions clear, reporting means, this is what's going on. This is the state of this department, correct? Is that what we're talking about?
The same report we had before during the council meetings.
Okay.
I agree with that.
So that is, we're all clear. That is already being done to the city council. Everyone does report to the city council. That's why we have meetings, as is. Now, as far as day-to-day operations, I'm not talking about reporting to, but day-to-day operations, this person is gonna have to work with the mayor, is gonna have to work with Danielle, gonna have to work with every single person, things that we're not involved in the city, as a city council on a day-to-day. And, and I would, that, that's just something that we need to make sure, like, we're not making one exception for one department. And I get that there's that conflict, but, but she's, this is a contracted employee that can come in and go, come and go as they please, how they gotta feel they're gonna do their work, and they're not gonna be, they're gonna need access, but also they can stop access. It's up to them how much access they want to who. That's theirs, and if they're not doing a good job and we're having issues with it, we get it on them.
May I interject just one thing? It is a bit more complex because there are grants, there are loans, there are paper, there's paperwork that has to be mutually looked over by both of us, has to be signed off of the mayor before the, the CMFO can do anything with it. So it's, it's, it's an intricate day-to-day working, and it is important that, I mean, I think we're all adults and we can all work together. I don't see a problem not sticking with the way things, I mean, I.
Well, just to add to what, what you said, what we, what our goal is, is to be able to hire someone to do this position and to be able to keep a CMFO, which we have not been able to do because there is conflict. There's obviously conflict when we've gone through four CMFOs. So we, we're trying to work upon that this person will be able to do their job without micromanaging and without having a toxic situation in the office.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to beat up my mayor, but I really not, but there is a trend.
No, but we're just trying to beat up on.
I do need to say, there's not a trend. The first two people there were situations that happened, and, and that was unfortunate, and they're not here. The third lady, she The third lady, she was very good, she didn't get a different job, and there was...
We all got phone calls from the third lady, we know what happened.
So, like, we know what happened before.
They don't make excuses, that's what I'm asking.
Well, I'm not making excuses, there are certain lanes that the mayor has and certain that finance...
Why don't we take this, we talk to that individual, see what he's willing to do before we get into that.
Yeah, I think you're...
We already got that one motion going.
Just check and see if we can do it.
Yeah, so the first one's passed, we're checking to see if we can do it. What I was gonna ask that we don't necessarily, I don't know if we need a motion for though, but if we find out we can do it, can we go ahead and get the ball rolling while we're not in session and put an offer letter out to him saying, hey, this is what we're offering to do this, and, and see if we can put it out there? I mean, it...
Is that, is that gonna be labeled with all the whole, we got no, we got no other parameters to put in there for him? 'Cause I think, there are certain things he's gonna accept, and certain things...
If he has some parameters that he wants to put in there on it, then we'll just talk about it the next meeting.
So do, may I ask, what, what, you're willing to offer, how many days will he be working, how much will he charges? I mean, there are things like that, 'cause we need someone here who's at least four days a week to be, to, to do the duties that are required.
I, I would think that would be left up to him, he's done the job, he knows what it is.
He gave us an offer before.
Gave us three different offers.
Okay, so, let's, let's see if he wants to... Okay, so just, I'll just say for now, let's just table it, let's see if, make sure...
See what he's...
Let leave the motion, we'll do research.
How about, how about we make a motion to extend him to put in an offer to us what he's willing to do?
I'll second that.
Yep.
So, are we still on, did we finally pass this?
Yeah, we passed that first motion already.
Okay, now what are you saying?
I'm gonna make a motion that we make contact, have someone from the, the city make contact with him and have his submitted proposal that he's willing to do contracted work for, for the city's C M F O job.
There's, there's a motion second, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Uh...
Any opposed? Okay, we'll get that. Any further on that? Okay, we're going to move business now, we're, the first reading, um, this ordinance came over from the planning commission, um, it has to do with a particular land out by the mine that was, wants to be rezoned for, um, gosh.
Is it the first one?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
This first one?
I'm sorry.
Rooftop signs, it has another...
All right, okay, excuse me, the rooftop, the rooftop sign, and this has to do basically with, uh, one particular group U T was wanting to put some signs, I don't know, just the ability to do it, and so we limited the degree, so you cannot see them from the ground, you can also only see them from the air, and that's what they were requesting, so that's been passed by the planning.
Motion to approve, second.
Uh, any discussion on that?
This one, I think it's a good idea, I think we're judging upper town.
Yep. Denny? This is some like, uh, and I'm just gonna be there for, non-biased, it wasn't anything else for, against, I voted for, everybody else go for it. It's just, it's just giving a little bit more leeway on signs, and the signs that are, the, the sign, you're talking about signs that junk up our town, I know what you're talking about, um, this isn't anything to expand on that, it's, it's, um, this is just, this is actually expanding on nice signs, good signs, most of the signs that are junking up that y'all are talking about, they're not there right anyways, they're not even following an ordinance, so it's not, it's not gonna fit that, so...
Can we do, can we roll call on this?
Any further discussion on that? Okay, we'll have a roll call, please.
Councilwoman Kannell?
No.
Councilman Backcock?
No.
Councilman Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
No.
Councilman Liddy?
No.
So we have three hazards here.
Okay, so, what's that?
Four does, four does. Four does, one yes, one perhaps.
Yeah, four.
Yep.
So, it fails. Um, okay, so the next one, um, this is ordinance to do with that particular area around the mine to allow recreational vehicles.
So, um, do you mind if I explain this one?
Go right here.
Okay, uh, this one was...
Well, you wanna make a reference, then you can discuss.
Um, is it okay if I explain before I make a motion? I, I, well, yeah, that's fine, motion to approve this ordinance.
This is just, again, by the mine out there, this, this was passed by the planning...
Y'all might wanna second this, this sign, you don't have to go forward. I'll second it for, uh, discussion, so we can hear what it is. Like, um, the mine owns some property down by...
No, it's not the mine, it's a person.
It's, it's a person who owns the property, but it's zone, the zone mine, I apologize, you're correct, it's a, it's a person who owns the property, but it's zone mine, okay? And there's a lot of miners that come in and they work for so many months, and they have R Vs. And, um, basically on this property, they wanna zone it so that they can have a home, away from home, while they're here, um, there are some things in there that we're not trying to have necessarily, like, um, um, oh, yeah, permanent residence, we have stipulations in here, so it is not a permanent residence, it's a temporary residence, we have a lot of out-of-time miners that come here for months and months and months.
They're gonna be parking RVs and...
They're gonna be parking RVs, um, and that's basically what it is, it's basically like if we, it'd be the same as if we wanted to set up a campground and have zone it for, like, campground kind of situation. Am I, am I correct on that?
What about the storage unit part of it?
The storage unit part of it? What you're, what you're concerned on those storage unit parts of?
I mean, you were approving for storage units and recreational, we're talking about back behind us, it kinda, by the...
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's, it's over by the mine, it's further, it's agricultural.
But it's, but it's right in the same area, you go down the same road.
So this is a citizen that's requesting that...
Yeah, it's a bunch of mining property that really just can't...
He's requesting that he can have this to further develop his land, and, you know, it's...
But I'm saying he wants to put storage units too, from what I'm getting, that's why it's written on here.
Yeah, and as far as the storage units, um, we didn't, we didn't dis, we didn't discuss storage units at all.
I think it's already, I think store, I could be wrong, but I think storage is already allowed at the mine.
That's already done, 'cause we didn't discuss storage units at all during that meeting, so...
The only thing that's amended is the recreational.
This is a council meeting?
No, this is a planning meeting.
Plan, okay.
This class of planning.
I'm y'all's representative on the planning commission, okay. So this is just, this is a citizen that wants to, um, do more with their property, utilize his property, and he's utilizing it for something that, uh, brings people that come and spend their money here, and, um, and we also, you know, we put some stuff in there, made it so it's not, what, the, the biggest concern the planning can, commission, planning, planning commission had was, is this gonna be permanent, and are we making a whole other trailer park, what are we doing here? And that was, that was a concern, and we're not doing that, it's just...
It was a hundred and twenty days you probably spent.
Yeah, we're building it on it.
You know, they run the sewer, the sewer stuff up there, they get dumped in.
Is this property, property, is this property land that can be developed for permanent housing?
No.
And for what reason?
It's right behind the landfill.
'Cause it's mining, it's, it's, the mining zone won't allow for it.
So if you know what...
You can't build...
It can be rezoned.
If you know where the land's...
You can't spot them.
We have a limited amount of space for, for growth, and I'm not in favor of using it for R V parks.
Well, but, but what Danielle's saying, it can't be, because you're talking about, not only is the mine there, you're right next to the landfill to, but, um, I didn't...
And it's personal property.
And you're right about that, too.
It's personal property.
It hasn't seemed to make much difference with some of these houses that we've got up there.
Yeah. I'm just saying, this, this guy's property, he asked for it, um, I don't feel I have the right to tell, if he's not, he's not hurting anybody, it's not affecting anybody, if it's not hurting someone, it's not infringing anyone's liberties, um, I feel we should not tell people what to do with the property, but that's my opinion.
So right now, it's, it's, it's zone mining.
Sewer, if it, if anything happens with sewer, that's gotta go, it's gotta get approved by these guys.
I would just curious as to what they were, if they're doing dump site or they have individual spots, that's why I was just asking about that.
I think it's just gonna be individual spots, they're gonna make, apparently what they've told, it's gonna be nice layout of individual spots where people can pull in and do, you know?
It's a minimum, a maximum of a hundred and twenty days.
Do they, do they have to work with the mine to rent or can anybody?
No, it's anybody.
I think we've got, uh...
But it was aimed towards that, sorry.
Hotels, and we've got rentals as well, we got a lot of landlords around here too, that could be cutting into them too, I mean, if they're working here, they can stay at the hotels, or they can stay at a, you know, get a rental for a couple of months, you know, why are we...
We're not gonna, I mean...
And they're good taxpaying citizens, you know?
They're not, I mean, if you're gonna go live somewhere for six months, you ain't gonna rent it for a while now.
You wanna look on the map of them, it's kinda...
Part of this is not that big, so I'm gonna hear, working over there, you can stay at a hotel and you're fine.
Yeah, it's, it's up in here, and, and in one there. It crosses through, um, in between the landfill and the justice center and the mine.
The lines there are...
It's part hand, part city, part county.
But I mean, I mean, these cross lines here are...
That's split down.
Exactly, so they're, they won't put this in the foot.
But he's, no, not where he's at.
He's up here, right?
Yeah, he's, he's in between cities and town.
He's pretty close to the landfill.
All I'm saying is, is this guy's land, and it's his land, he wants to do something that's gonna improve his land, but why are we getting the land?
Well, we're just asking questions.
Yeah.
Everybody's asking questions.
Why are we worried where, why are we gonna try to force someone to spend some money at some particular entity or some, whatever, I mean, these people, if they're, if they're here, trust me, the miners are in town spending money.
That's what you're saying, but I'm saying, we're all asking questions, trying to force... I don't think anyone's trying to do anything, I think it was just a point that was brought up that, hey, we have these, these houses gonna affect our own business center here and that, and I don't think it's like, hey, they have to stay in the hotel, it has to rent this house.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think, they're not staying in a hotel, the only reason else would not to do what they're gonna do, that's all I'm saying.
How much land are we talking about?
Well, how many sites they have?
They don't have, it's just allowing them to do it, they, they, we don't, their plan and all that, that would go through, that would still have to go through the planning commission, if it's sewer lines, gonna run, that has to go through the planning commission. This just allows them to say, we can do this.
How about we do this? How about we do this? I'll put one, I'll put one of y'all's thing, we'll do it on the first reading and have him here to the next meeting to explain exactly what he wants to do to us, so that we can see the big picture.
We'd have a chance to go up there.
And then maybe pictures of the area and see exactly where it's gonna be and how it's gonna affect things, and so on and so forth.
Right now, we're just blindly, I do whatever you want to.
Yeah, I say, we, I say we, we both approve on table, we approve it in the first reading and ask him to come to the next meeting and speak to us.
So is that your motion?
Well, there's a motion on table to approve it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
If you'll let me amend that.
Next one, second, if that will...
I did, I, I seconded it, I...
We got amended.
You said, I'm gonna amend it to that, we go ahead and prove this on the first reading and invite him to speak to us the next council meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so we're voting on the amendment to let, allow him to come speak to us at the next meeting, any discussion on that?
Yeah, and, and I'm totally fine with that, I understand that, um, just so you all know, if he's, this is just allowing that to happen, as far as like, so now I can go spend money to, to get an architect to design this out. They don't wanna go spend money to get an architect to design this out if they can't, if they're not gonna have it there. So, even, let's say we approve, we were approving everything tonight, even then, the planning commission's still gonna have to approve everything that he goes forward with, it won't just willy-nilly, we just throw it off.
I, I just think he's gonna, you know, if he explains it in his detail, what he wants to do to help us as citizens understand what's going on.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, I, I do want to, and this just came to my attention, uh, this particular sign ordinance, this would just lead to amend the ordinance, and the only reason I remember now that this was brought up is because there is not an ordinance about this type of sign in our ordinance.
They, they, they were pumped that down, huh?
Yes, but let me just explain one thing, so they can go ahead and do this, 'cause there's nothing in our ordinance that says they can't, that's why Dr. Duke introduced this, and now that I think about it.
Why don't we vote on it?
Yeah, why would we waste all this time if, if, if it's out of our control?
I tried to tell y'all, like, this helps, but y'all wanted to go with it, so...
But this, this ordinance...
Don't you think anything about the planning? These both have went, went to the planning.
These help, these help.
It's not like the planning commission can overstep our bounds.
No.
No.
That's what they've done.
No.
No, what she's saying...
It has to go through the planning.
Can one person explain it, can we stop talking over each other and some, one person?
I, I think we need to move on, it's already been voted on, it's been voted down, we don't have to go back.
Exactly.
We need to move on.
Do you wanna hear, or do you, I mean, I'll motion if you want, motion to just, Exeter Roberts Rule will work for two minutes.
We haven't been in them the whole time, everybody's been talking to each other.
Exactly.
The entire town.
Let's get on with the meeting.
Let's go to number three and move on.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Hold on, hold on, uh, that, that one, uh, we removed that because Rusty has a, to, hold, hold on just a minute, Rusty, did he leave on it?
Yeah.
Well, he already had that, we didn't realize there was enough in the budget to cover that, so we don't need a budget limit, so we're gonna scrap that one. Are we going, what are we doing about number four?
We're gonna talk about it.
Okay.
It's next, I'm gonna check it.
It's yours.
It's your item? Number four, yours.
I'm sorry, I was looking at yours, uh, yes, here's the, uh, we got three different, three different...
That's all.
Three different, uh, we got, first of all, a building inspector, Inspector Lynn is taking a job from a job in Cookville, and he's recommended highly, a couple of different men, one of them did apply, and his information is in there, he's willing to come on board, he's got all the credentials, and he comes highly approved by, by Lynn, so I would suggest that we go ahead and approve him.
Will you give a good recommendation?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we bring him in next meeting and meet with him at least.
That's a bit of a problem for me, we have five people that have come in for permits this week alone, and nobody tends to act to me.
And he's, he's a contractor, he's out of, out of authority in the city, right?
We have no building inspector.
I know, I know what you're saying, but I'm saying, are you, are you giving us the pass on the H R side of this to go ahead and, 'cause you know this is a problem to do that without your approval, so...
I have interviewed him, I have met him.
So you're making the recommendation?
I will make that recommendation.
There you go.
Lou, do we have a motion? Yeah, second.
Okay, any discussion on that?
I'd like to say Lynn was a great building inspector, he was very pro-business, if he's given a recommendation for this guy, I'm gonna take that recommendation and vote for him.
Same.
Yeah.
I think he was great.
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay. Okay.
Motion to remove number five.
Wait, wait, wait a minute, we've got two others under this, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The A R P grant, which is guaranteed, even though we're already using U C D D as grant writer and Mr. Jones, because of the nature of this, they asked that we do an R F Q. It comes through T D X, and we put an R F Q out, and they have re-applied, so they both have applied to be the grant writer and engineer for this grant project. So that's why we're having to do this, so.
Did anyone else apply?
No.
Did we ask anybody else?
It was.
We put it out to bed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion to approve, second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Then we move on.
We have number five now. Uh, motion to, uh, remove this from the, second minutes, the agenda. The agenda, I apologize.
Yes, C V.
Yeah.
All right, the next item is, uh, remove.
Do we, do we vote on it?
Yeah, we need to vote on it.
We could, yeah.
Even though you, you bought it, all right.
No, we need to vote to remove it.
He made a motion.
We gotta vote to remove it.
All right, then let's, all in favor of removing this?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next item, Councilman.
I'd like to motion that we remove the, uh, permit fees as far as like, if we're doing special, if we're doing events, if we're doing, um, you got kids out there selling lemonade, can we remove the fees if they come in here, get a peddler's permit, can we remove the fees?
We did that.
Peddler's permit.
Peddler's permits are done.
Yeah.
We don't have those.
But special event fees are not.
Yeah, so I meant, yeah, all these fees, special events fees, peddler's permits are gone, special events fees, I believe should be the same.
It's just twenty-five dollars, I believe?
Yeah.
And that's for that, just applying.
Yeah.
Is that for the whole event, event, or each person involved?
Yeah, if someone's putting on an event, they come get their permits, there's no, there's no, there's no fee with it. They don't cost them any money to get the permit. They're just coming in to get the permit, they're done.
I, I would like to amend that to nonprofits, and then ones that are for profit pay the fee.
So, let's do.
Cindy's gonna have to be checking everybody that comes in, one of us.
So real quick, Steve, let's, let's go with the first motion, and then you will vote on the other, and then go back to the next.
Whatever.
Okay, but I don't think I got a second.
May I?
I'm gonna listen to Danielle about that.
Well, I'm just saying, if, if they're gonna come in for an event, something simple, are they gonna bring in their nonprofit information or?
Well, they have taxes in, taxes in cars, B-Wave, that should be.
Well, can we verify that special events are only events that block city street or, it's, it's not just any, any sort of.
You only have to have a special event permit, you're welcome.
So it's not that many anyway?
No, we don't need that.
Yeah, so if that's cool with y'all, I just need a second on that motion. So, the, the motion is to remove the special, special permit fees for special events.
Is there a second? Okay, you didn't, guys, you liked the section. Okay, parking on the city, on the side streets, Councilman.
This is, you'll be quick and easy. I've received four phone calls, two administrators, two teachers. Flat Avenue, House Street, High Street, with the parking of the cars, the buses going through there. College, just another one, college. They've almost had quite a few accidents on there. I was gonna ask the chief to look into that and see what level of solution. That's all I wanna talk about.
I'll, I'll try to talk to some of the officers, get some ideas. I know we've had issues on Flat Avenue before with some of the parking. I think some of it is just operator error, unfortunately, maybe some of it being young kids driving.
I've, I've got a question. What about, you know how you've got the stop sign, fight, and fights are through, through a tree? Yes. Would a stop sign, a four-way stop there help that at all?
That's a huge issue with me living on.
I mean, they come off.
They run in front of me all the time. They're expecting that to be a four-way.
I think that's what the problem is.
And it being where the, the school buses come down makes it a little more critical. People are not stopping.
I don't have a hundred percent answer on that, just to be honest, 'cause it could create a bigger situation.
Well, all I'm asking is for you to check into it and get back to us, 'cause I know we can't solve this.
I'm open, I'm open to anything.
We talked about maybe a sign that says, this is a two-way, not a four, or, or some lengthy line.
We do have accidents that happen in spring and fall. We do have accidents that happen there. It's probably, honestly, it's one of the worst intersections, but it definitely, luckily, it's not fast-moving vehicles, so when they do have wrecks, most of the times they're not big wrecks, but still, we do have wrecks.
That's not the only.
That's, that's, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, that's not the only street or area too, so I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of this big time, because, um, I don't know if we have anything on the books that says that we shouldn't. If you have a driveway, you should use the driveway, but it does cause, I mean, I live on college.
Well, we did sound, sent out that letter though, and we didn't get any.
I didn't do anything, but.
That's why we need to get.
Colom is another one. Colom is a terrible spot for parking. You have no room for buses around there, and buses do go around there. So we need to either make an ordinance if it's not there, and have it enforced, or we need to, letters aren't working, so.
Just hope the chief, when you come back with your recommendations next meeting, give us an idea of what you think.
I can do my best. That's all I ask.
We've had, we've had planning commission meetings before talking about these issues and stuff, and.
Yeah.
Kinda, you know what I mean, it's kinda been hit.
It is a problem for me, but I'm more concerned about the school buses and the students and the next year's drivers.
I'll do some research, be glad to talk to y'all about it as much as you want.